Good news is always...
Good news is always... So I don't have to be going down so early. Sorry about that. Bruce told you this should've came. This is a hot spring. So we hit all this... Bruce, I'll do the graphics. Well, he's a senator, so that's his...
What's your...
Cut back the count last day.
Want to call this, uh... July twenty eighth, Tuesday, July twenty eighth, two thousand and fifteen, uh, special city council meeting, uh, to order? If we could, Charlene, have a roll call for determination of quorum.
Laurenti. Wright. Weifenbach. Doyle. Estes.
Here.
Lewis. Drew. Roberts. Nordstrom. Scott. We have quorum.
Thank you. Um... Would like to now have a invocation by Alderman Ritchie Nordstrom. You are welcome to participate, but not required.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to bring us all together and the participants in discussion of the future of our fair city. Please bring your wisdom and grace upon us this evening and guide us through these deliberations. In your holy name, we thank you. Amen.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd just like to take a second, uh, to thank the presenters last night. Mayor Allender, Pete Gertz with the airport, Chief Carl Jaggers with the police, Jeff Barbir with Community Resources, Jeff Beigler with Parks and Rec, and Pauline Sumption, our finance director. We had a, we had a good evening. I, I, I think everybody got the, all their questions asked and answered, and, and I thought it was a, um, I, I just want to thank everybody for their participation. Uh, like last night, tonight, we have, uh... We have pre- presenters that will have, uh, on thirty-minute intervals, and then at seven, we will have the community investment groups, which will not do presentations, but they're, they're available for questions from the, uh, from the dais. So, any questions from the council people? If, if not, we'll start with, uh, Paula Wilkinson Smith with Lifeways. Paula, the, the floor is yours.
Well, I want to thank the council for your time and appreciate your support. I have met and know some of you. I don't know all of you. I always enjoy visiting with you, and if you ever have any, if you have questions tonight, certainly, or anytime, I'm definitely look forward to meeting you and visiting with you more. I've put together a brief presentation, and, uh, please, uh, feel free to either interject questions or however you're comfortable in doing that. Lifeways is an alcohol and drug prevention agency in Rapid. We have been, um, doing what we've been doing for going on fourteen years. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to share what we do, how we impact the young people in our community, and, um, again, the importance of our role in the school and the ability to reach so many young people when they're in need, when their families are in need, and also to provide education. Lifeways staff, our counselors, have offices right in the secondary schools, so our partnership with the Rapid City Schools, that is a very, um, good partnership. We're, they're very supportive of our role there, and we get the great opportunity, I can speak for our counselors. Um, they look forward to the work that they do in the schools. They believe it's an opportunity to make a difference in a young person's life every day, to help them, give them knowledge and skills that they need to succeed and to address substance abuse either in their life or prevent substance abuse in the future. It truly is, knowledge is power for these kids, and our counselors give them the knowledge. A good visual, I think, about Lifeways, because sometimes it's hard to understand exactly how we work. When I say we work in the schools, we really are bridging that gap from the schools to the community, and so in the schools, we're working with young people in the classroom. We have a science-based curriculum. We present it to all seventh and ninth graders. We do other presentation with other grades also, when teachers request it, or if there's a, a new issue or a new trend that, um, the school is concerned about, we'll go in and present. Um, so we do the implementation of the program. We have about seven components that we build that bridge with, and it reaches, it reaches from the classroom to doing screenings if, if young people are in trouble and/or if they have questions regarding alcohol and drug abuse. We can do screenings in the schools, so they can right away get help, get referrals, and we also work with groups, um, that go out into the community, older teens, working with younger teens, so it's a really very broad, um, programs that we do, and then when young people in the school need community resources, we're able to reach out, and we have connections with other youth organizations in the community that, um, can either get, help them get treatment if they need treatment, or counseling, or some kind of resource that's out there. We know the connections there. We're able to do that. This is a more of a continuum, truly, as we walk through our programs. Uh, this, there's about seven components on the continuum. I mentioned classroom curriculum. We also do individual and group education, depending on the needs of the students. Uh, we, again, do the peer-to-peer groups. That's a great opportunity for, um, different campaigns during the year. An example of a campaign, um, last year is, uh, it was focused on choose art, and during Red Ribbon Week, we worked with the schools and, um, the art teachers and different people in the schools and having youth create their passion, what they, what do they love to do? And they created art and poetry and different things, and, uh, then we, they shared that, and we ended up having an event in May where some dancers created dancers from the s- dances from the art that were created in the school. So it was a real connection and education, talking to the kids about, instead of not, not what to do, don't do this, don't do that, is some young people, um, struggle with, hearing that. We talked about what can you do? And that was, we helped them find their passion. Uh, we also do screenings and early intervention, early identification of if there's a problem, maybe starting to, um, show up, sign symptoms with a young person. We can do a screening and get them back on track. We can, also, we have early intervention programs after school that we provide to help them. There's diff- three levels of that. We have one for middle school, and we have two high school programs, different levels of intensity, and then we can also do relapse prevention if a student is, um, in trouble with youth. Some of the things we've been talking about the past year is the concerns that we have as an agency and other local agencies about some of the, um, data that we are seeing that impacts our kids, and, and some of them, just a little bit, I'm going to touch on, just to give you a picture of what we hear and see in the schools when we work with kids. Certainly, uh, it's a concern that our teens in South Dakota are second highest in the nation for binge drinking, and, uh, students who have five or more drinks of alcohol in a row with a couple, within a couple of hours on one day in the past thirty days is, is considered binge drinking, and of course, you can imagine the risk they take, um, when it comes to drinking that much, that quickly, in far, as far as moving into addiction rather quickly, too. And then we're the fifth highest in the nation in driving after drinking of young people doing that. The other challenges when we're visiting in the schools with young people is youth reporting an increase in access and abuse of methamphetamine, prescription drugs, over-the-counter medications. It seems like they're becoming more readily available, and of course, we try to educate as much as we can on those, and then again, get kids help when we see problems. We are also hearing about high levels of THC in, uh, what's called marijuana wax. Um, it can be thirty to pers- to eighty percent THC, which, um, you can imagine is quite a bit. Um... And then the other challenges we are facing, Lifeways was facing, and that we've been talking about, is we had a fifty percent budget cut. I mentioned it last year briefly, uh, from the state. The state, um, is the pass-through for federal grants, and that federal grant decreased, so they decreased, um, prevention funding from the state. And so, um, that impacted us in a way that, um, we, we were able to, you know, we're going to be okay. We had to cut services, decrease services. That's never good, but we still feel like we're covering quite a bit, and, uh, we're going to work on getting, uh, the community involved to deal with the decrease. So I'm not coming here to ask for more. I'm, I realize that, um... We can work on that at a community grassroots level, and we have a plan. The Lifeways Board is working on that. So, these are the numbers, the prevention ed numbers for just one year. As you can see, we're in the classroom several hours in between middle schools and high schools. As I said, we have counselors that are there all day long, and that, these are the things they'll do they, in a typical day in the life of a Lifeways counselor. Um, they're very busy in that respect. We have studies that, in data that we've collected, that show that young people who are involved in the science-based curriculum that we share and work with our Lifeways counselors are more likely to have more protective factors than other youth, and those protective factors that we measure are coping and refusal skills, being able to identify a positive adult in their life, identify goals and opportunities, have control over their lives. They feel valued with, by at least one adult in their life, and have the ability to handle difficult situations. This is the prevention, our intervention data, um, on the top there, and then, just because we're going into our fourteenth year, I totaled up the past fourteen years and the number of young people we've impacted with our intervention. Just, this is just the intervention programs. Is over twenty thousand young people and their parents. This is a longitudinal data that the Cheeseman collects every year. Um, as you can see, it hasn't been collected for the fourteen, fifteen, twenty fourteen, fifteen. I don't know if you are aware of it, but maybe, it's been in the paper a little bit. There's a new law that has changed the way surveys are done in, uh, schools, and now we need active parent permission for to do, for students to do any survey, baseline survey, which, you know, we need surveys for federal grants. Anybody needs surveys for federal grants, not just Lifeways, so we're a little concerned about that. But before they stop doing the survey, you could certainly see the decrease, the decline in, um, alcohol use over the past thirty days and the past twelve to thirteen years. Um, there is a little bit uptick there with the high school, um, the year before, and we're looking towards, um, the Cheeseman Center is working on getting that, getting the parent permission forms and getting everything aligned with that new law, and we hope to be up and rolling again this fall to get some surveys. I'm just going to show two more slides of data. I know some people like data and other people, um, aren't, you know, data isn't a story, and I have a, I have some of both, but I thought I'd share this because I think this really tells, uh, it's a nugget of information that I think's important about our kids. In, um, in that survey that the Cheeseman does, it was reported, uh, twenty-four point eight percent of high school and three point eight of middle school students in Rapid City reported drinking alcohol the past thirty days. Okay? So then, the ability that we have with the evaluation data is to break that down into those young people who drank alcohol in the past thirty days. Um, in the dark blue, the middle school, um, so three point eight percent of middle school students who reported use of alcohol, forty percent of those, uh, reported drinking is a good way to cope with their sadness and depression. Sixty-two percent of them reported binge drinking, eighty-two percent drank at school, and fifty-four percent came to school intoxicated. That's middle school. Same thing at, with the light blue color. Uh, twenty-four percent of the high school students who reported use of alcohol, twenty-one percent, uh, thought drinking was a good way to cope, thirty-two percent drank, like binge drank, and thirty-nine percent drank at school, thirty-nine percent came to school intoxicated. This, um, slide reflects, um, the curriculum we have. It's a national curriculum called Project Success, and we can begin to see changes in that specific, um, knowledge or thought that using alcohol or drugs is a good way to deal with sadness or depression. With that curriculum, we're able to, to get some change, and as you know, middle school's on the left, high school's on the right. We can create a six percent change with the middle school and over about twenty, twenty-five percent, um, better or an improvement in less kids thought alcohol was a good way to cope. So we be, we can begin to see a change in that, in the positive. We have the early intervention program that we have after school. We have, um, young people fill out surveys, and we collect, um, knowledge-based and, and attitudes. And throughout the years that I've worked with Lifeways, it's very, it's a rare instance that, um, young people don't leave their, come there not real happy, but leave there very grateful that they learned what they did and that they have a new understanding of the fam- their fam- the importance of their family and the importance of their, um, educational goals. So in our data, we show that the sooner young people get help, the sooner, the less likely they are to reoffend. So, only six percent in tracking through the recidivism data, arrest data, only six percent of the students in one year attending our least restrictive, less and, less intensive, um, intervention program. Only six percent of those kids reoffended. And overall, this, out of the three programs after school, nine, we had ninety-seven percent parent involvement, and this is a diverse group of kids. They, they, parents who are also struggling with their all, all, with their, um, use of alcohol and drugs, too. They come, they want answers. They want their children to succeed, and, um, they come wanting information. So the cost benefits, this talks about what research has shown, direct and indirect benefits in public expenditures through educational health, criminal and child welfare, and, uh, there are, you know, pretty good savings, I would say. I'd like to share just briefly a story that is, to me, hard to put money on, a money value on because it does, this doesn't less pain and suffering and how much it is, how much is a young per, turning a young person around, how much is that worth? But just an example, uh, this year, we had a young man go through our, our, our most intensive level of early intervention. It's called Path Three. It's a twenty-hour program. He completed. He was successful. He made a commitment to not use. He didn't use for almost two months. He was able to do that on his own, and he had built a strong relationship with his Lifeways counselor at his school, at his high school. And this summer, uh, in June, um, his parents called and his, their son went to them and said he'd been, he relapsed. He was using every day, and he wanted to talk to his Lifeways counselor and get more help. Kids get connected to our staff with that ability to co- walk, come into their office when they're in the schools and really make the connection that changes lives. And they can reach out to the Lifeways counselor. So that young man came in, and two days later, after working with their Lifeways counselor, they were in treatment. And, um, last we heard, they had completed, the young man completed treatment and was back on track. So there are lots of positive stories that we have. We feel, again, we feel very fortunate to have the opportunity to help these, these students. This is just a picture, um, of a young, a group of young people. We had a youth conference, uh, this, uh, last October. We talked about things they can do in their schools to pass the message of, of being drug-free and, um, choosing other behavior and finding other peers and passing the message on. I, I didn't refer, but it, I did give you an, another sheet. It's some quotes. It lists our staff, um, names, who they are, and contact information, as well as our Lifeways Board members, and also some quotes from community people that we work with that refer kids to us. Kim Morsing from the diversion program, uh, Justin Fa- Faulkenhouser, um, juvenile correction agent, and then Officer Tim Doyle, lay a son officer, uh, rep at Central High School. Um, just some, uh, responses as far as how they see Lifeways making an impact in the schools and in the community. If you have any questions, I'm sure open to that.
Thank you, Paula. I'll, I'll open up to the dais for any questions. Uh, Alderwoman Darla Drew.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a couple of questions. How many students did you say you impacted last year?
Last year? Well, I would, I'd, in, in different ways, the slide, I can tell you what slide to go to.
Yeah.
Um, the, in the prevention ed, um, it's two thousand and three, two thousand and fifteen prevention data. That, that data there is actually last year's. So it would be, um, we were in the classroom, and classrooms are usually thirty kids in a classroom, so we're in, um, two middle schools and the three high schools for a thousand, over a thousand, almost twelve hundred hours. Uh, we did eighty-four groups, and most of the time, there's about five or six kids in a group. I could certainly get a number there. I, the, that's with our prevention numbers, and the slide after that is the actual intervention numbers. That's where we're one-to-one or small groups working with kids, and, and that would be twelve hundred individual screenings we did. Um, a hundred and sixty-seven kids attended our after-school program, and then their hundred and thirty-four parents. Uh, we did a hundred and ninety-six sessions with young people at, during school to support them to stay drug-free, potentially relapse protect, prevention or help getting them into treatment, and, um, then seventy of those sessions included their families. So that gives you a general number. Now, when I said the twenty thousand number, I multiplied generally, that's a, that's real close to what we normally do in a year, and then I multiplied that times the number of years we've been in the schools.
And how much of, um, um, additional funding are you looking at for this year?
We, we were cut, uh, fifty percent, and that was four positions, and so we lost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the past two years by our budget decreases. Uh, we have cut, um, two positions in our office. There's two of us now in the office, and two counselors. If we were to return to the middle, the three middle schools that we needed to suspend, suspend services for, we would approximately a hundred and fifty thousand.
So the two hundred and fifty was from the state?
Date.
Okay.
That, through a federal pass-through, a federal grant that decreased.
Okay. And, and you're looking for the council to make up the full amount?
No, no, every, for the past, last year, there was sixty thousand. Uh, the years before that, there was fifty. I'm only asking for what we've received in the past.
Okay, thank you. That, I yield.
Thank you. Just for the record, I'll, I'll go to our, uh, finance officer, Pauline Sumption. Just to put on the record, uh, what, what their financial request is, and so everybody knows where it's at in the budget.
Thank you, Mr. President. Their request was for sixty thousand dollars. The mayor has budgeted sixty thousand dollars, and it is in the mayor and council cost center under professional, other professional services, I believe. So you will not see an individual line item. But if you recall, when Mayor Allender did his presentation, he was talking about moving all of these community investments over to their own separate cost center, and this is one of them. That would be moved to that cost center, but we weren't doing it for this year. It'd be for next year.
Thank you, Pauline. Um, we'll go to Alderman Ritchie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, just a general question about, uh, if I may follow up on what Pauline is suggesting, and the mayor is suggesting the movement of this all over to, uh, the, uh, one line item. Um, just something for us to think about is a liaison to this, uh, however we finally get it set up, but having a liaison to this, uh, group or groups, however that we get that set up, but it's something to think about because this, to me, this is one way to see how our investment is, uh, sustained, and if there's any other follow-ups that need to be done, I, I just would encourage us to take a look at doing a liaison to this group as well.
Thank you. Uh, Alderman Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. President. I... I don't find it surprising that we're the second highest in teen binge drinking when we're one of the highest states in per capita consumption of alcohol. Well, sometimes I sit here and feel somewhat hypocritical in, in, in the, the positions we take when it comes to alcohol. to alcohol consumption in our community and what sort of messages we're sending to the young people. And then we send them a message, and then we turn around the other way and try to spin them back to the right direction and make them understand. I don't do as I do, do as I say. I understand what you're up against, it's, it's commendable. I guess I'll just leave it at that. Thanks.
Thank you, Ron. We'll go to Alderman Steve Larente.
Thank you, Chair. And Paula, thank you for your service to our community. It's obviously invaluable. My questions for you are, knowing that you've had to suspend services in some of the school, parts of the school district, is the school district, are they participating at the same levels as the city? Where is the school district with your program?
Right. Good, good. I don't mind that at all, that question. Thirteen years ago, the state agreed to, the agreement to fund us at the level they were funding us back then, if only the city and the school participated. So the, the school matches the, what the city has. So they also contribute sixty thousand dollars.
Okay. And that's what, you're receiving that this next budget year?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
You bet.
We'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you. So just a follow-up question. Is there an MOU or an agreement in place that that has, so if the city were to double theirs to a hundred and twenty, the school would have to double theirs?
Well, let's see. I'm not sure if they'd have to, but they, they, I think I could, I would definitely approach that. And at one point, of course, we all know about where the school's at right now, but at one point, there was a discussion that if, if the city would increase, that the schools would certainly look at it. Now, I cannot speak, obviously, for the schools, but I would definitely be willing to begin the conversation.
Thank you. So there's real no MOU or agreement in place? It's just?
No legal.
It's just an agreement year to year to year to year, whatever, both sides want to contribute?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Amanda. I see no other lights in the queue. Paula, thank you. I've known you for years, and thank you for your work and your dedication to the, to the kids.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next on our schedule is, for six o'clock, is Black Hills Vision. And let's see, we have our presenter. Much Yousara is here. Much, we'll just turn the floor right over to you and take it over.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, Much Yousara, and I am not Bruce Rampleberg. He's a little bit taller than I am. Bruce is the Development Director at Black Hills Vision. Just to tell you a little bit about myself, most of you know me as an employee at Black Hills Power. And one of my roles at Black Hills Power is economic development. What I do in economic development is I participate and engaged in a lot of the activities, not just in Rapid City, but throughout the Black Hills. I serve on the Spearfish Economic Development Board of Directors. I serve on the Sturgis Economic Development Board of Directors. I'm the Treasurer of the South Dakota Chamber and Economic Development Council. I also serve on a few other task force. But here, as far as Black Hills Vision, I am the Chair for Black Hills Vision. Been involved with Black Hills Vision for the past ten years. It's, we're reaching its tenth year. And basically, that's why I'm here. So my background in economic development is not what I call an apprentice level. I, I'd like to think myself as being a senior player when it comes to economic development. Worked very closely with Ben Snow and others in the community as far as growing our city. I, I have a PowerPoint presentation, and quite frankly, I, I'm not going to go through every slide slowly. Really, what I wanted to do is, I gave you an updated version. And the reason why I wanted to do that is, I believe some of you may be fairly new to understanding what Black Hills Vision is and who we are, what we do, and what our mission is. So these PowerPoint slides have a little bit more detail that I want to leave with you, so you're able to digest that information. Some of it explains some of the impact it has as far as our activities, and also more detailed about some of our initiatives. So with that being said, the mission is pretty simple. It's really to invest in the development of job creation. So job creation is our number-one goal, but yet, we want to promote an opportunity for environment and economic development in the Black Hills region. Black Hills Vision is a regional organization. It's not a city-owned or operated-centered organization. In Phase One, when we got started back in two thousand and three, there were three organizations that really put this together. They saw the need of bringing together, basically, an organization that can handle major funding to support initiatives in the region, that has regional impact, not just city impact. In fact, most of our initiatives have regional impact. That's where we're really investing our dollars in. Rapid City Economic Development, the Black Hills Community Economic Development, of course, the Rapid City Chamber, were the three sort of fathers that put this together back in two thousand and three. I, along with Mark Merchant with West River Electric, Bruce Rampleberg at that time with First Interstate Bank, we were literally loaned as executives by our company for about two years to support Black Hills Vision. They paid our salaries, we basically were on board to really support not just Black Hills Vision, but the BRAC during that time when Ellsworth was on the BRAC list. So Phase One, real quick, basically was to create an investment opportunity and partnership. This was very rare in the state of South Dakota, in fact, in most states across the country, to bring together city, county, and businesses, along with state government, financial institutions, even chambers in economic development across our Black Hills, under one roof, to basically see the same vision, and yet, at the same time, support those major initiatives. Little bit of the background of how people invest. Most companies were investing, organizations have pledged about fifty thousand dollars for to five years. Some have even ranged five thousand. And again, all investors are informed of the news and events, as well as they are welcome to attend our board meeting. Just, I believe, in January, early, July, I'm sorry, we had our annual meeting, and I'm hoping, I believe, most of you were invited to the annual meeting. So that's one way of keeping everyone up to speed. We have now decided to create more of a six-month review to, to give you an update on what we're doing. One of the initiatives we did in the two thousand and three, two thousand and five era, first, first of all, we needed to raise three million dollars. That was our goal. We needed a, a funding mechanism. In short, before I do any more than this, this is what Black Hills Vision is, because a lot of people say, well, aren't we doing this already? Isn't Rapid City doing this? Isn't Spearfish doing this? Well, what Black Hills Vision basically is, is a foundation. It's a funding foundation. We're not an implementer, we don't have staff support, we don't have any kind of resources, and the resources we do have are all volunteered, except for one person, Bruce Rampleberg, who we do paid, actually, to help us raise funds. Other than that, it's a foundation. And we, we select initiatives or objectives based on what we think needs to happen to grow the Black Hills region and those communities in the Black Hills. Ellsworth Air Force Base was one of those initiatives. At that time, during the BRAC, we were able to contribute three hundred thousand dollars to help support the saving Ellsworth. Sanford Lab, Underground Lab, happened about that same time. And again, we were able to invest a little over a hundred thousand dollars to help fund some of the activities for Sanford. In fact, it was actually one point two million dollars. We really invest a lot because we saw the growth of our technology corridor being a very big impact. Air Service Task Force, as, as Rapid City Regional Airport, and it is a regional airport, that's one of the things I've had the opportunity of doing in my economic development background, reaching out to all the communities and reminding them that Rapid City is not a silo, but it is a region, support. And Rapid City Regional Airport is a good example of that, that support when it comes to region. Again, there, we supported them with five hundred thousand dollars during Phase One. Black Hills Business Development Center, the incubator, again, we were a large supporter, our vision committed five hundred thousand dollars to support this, and helping with matching funds to help build the incubator. Ben Snow is here today, I know he was very much involved with that, but he can tell you today that, that incubator is filled. And the activity is bringing new companies, Caterpillar being an example that utilizes the incubator, now is at West River Electric facilities. Again, a success story, but again, the funding support would not have happened without the help of Black Hills Vision. Dakota Land Trust, we saw an opportunity to help affordable housing. We contributed about four hundred thousand dollars. So after that three million was spent, took about five years to invest in those areas and seen the successes, and they were all success stories. We have testimonials from every one of those agencies. And again, with those initiatives come those agencies requesting for those funds. Black Hills Vision wants to ensure that if funds are being distributed, that there is a successful organization that can be measurable, that can show results, and can also have longevity when it comes to continuing that growth. And that's how we also fund those initiatives. So Phase Two happened around two thousand and ten, I believe. We went out and reached out to all the communities, basically did town hall meetings, and participated with eleven communities, had four hundred participants. Three of the things they identify in Phase Two back in two thousand and ten was providing a, a region-wide vision and leadership. In other words, they wanted to see our community's leadership continually work together, and seeing the vision, not just focusing on the day-to-day happenings, but what can happen ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. Provide coordination and communications. Another thing when it comes to communication, the communities in these town hall meetings basically identified the need to market the Black Hills, not just as a, for an example, Rapid City on its own, or Spearfish on its own, but actually all of the, the hills together. And then seek funding to grow the Black Hills economy. So our goal at that time was to raise two million dollars, and obviously, over the four-year period. The, the new initiatives, again, Ellsworth Development Authority became an initiative. As Ellsworth was off the BRAC, we saw the opportunity to maintain Ellsworth's stability through the Ellsworth Development Authority, which Governor Rounds and Governor Dugard is a very sound sponsor of the Development Authority. This is the organization that brings the missions to Ellsworth today. This is the organization that's looking at ways to safeguard its territory, its land, its air, to make sure. This is the group that's also doing a lot of the lobbying today, focusing on Ellsworth. Again, Black Hills Vision is an investor to making sure that this continues. It's funded by the state, but it's also matched by Black Hills Vision. And what the authority is asking us to do, its vision, is to support them for a couple of years until they're able to become sustainable. So we're agreed to do that. Rushmore Region Alliance, this is a marketing alliance put together by the economic development professionals in the Black Hills. Ben Snow being on that committee, Pat Curtinbach, Brian Walker, Holly Stotler out of Belfus. These individuals come together and basically, and I believe some of you may have attended this, this kickoff, when we kicked off the Rushmore Region Alliance. We were looking for a way to bring all the communities together and marketing the region as a, as a regional hub, not just a silo of one city versus another city. And it's been very successful. In fact, Ben Snow is here, and I don't know if Ben, you wanted to say a few words, but he's been one of our, he's kind of helped father this, along with Brian Walker from Spearfish. And Ben, I didn't know if you might want to just give him a quick synopsis of the success of this.
Sure. Thanks, Much. Good evening, everyone. This idea of regionalism and economic development is, is not really a new concept, although the work that was done during the first round of Black Hills Vision was wonderful to see happen. I, I arrived here in two thousand and nine, so we were right kind of between the Phase One and Phase Two. Having worked in the Denver metropolitan area where regionalism flourishes and does very well, you've got a lot of communities, down in Denver, there were seven different counties, that all, all banded together to create a regional voice for economic development. I, the one thing I just wanted to underscore here is that the sort of teamwork and collaboration is something that's very well-received when you're talking to people outside of our community, when they see that everybody gets along. If people perceive communities as being a, a very cutthroat and very competitive and willing to kind of cut each other off at the knees, that's kind of a dangerous precedent in my mind. Because what that does is, it, it doesn't really respect or honor the regional nature of the economy. It, it's my opinion that Rapid City being, you know, five times larger than the next-sized city in the Black Hills has an obligation to do right by the entire region. When we do that, we get a return in spades because of our, our size. The thing that I think is really important to recognize when you're doing any regional marketing is that it really is a situation where you've, you lift the tide for all of the communities here. And Rapid City benefits, all of the other communities benefit. If you add all of the people up in six-county area that comprise the Rushmore region, there's about a hundred and ninety thousand people that live here in the Black Hills. And I look at the Black Hills as being full of a lot of economic engines scattered throughout that six-county area, Much highlighted a few of them. And it's just important that Rapid City continues to support regional economic development.
Thanks, Ben. And again, the, the interesting thing about this region, Rushmore Region Alliance, is put together by the Black Hills Business Council, which is basically the executive directors of economic development and chamber throughout the Black Hills region. Very important group, a very good group, they meet monthly. Here's the thing, as, as a utility guy that, that gets to go out to these communities, I kind of sit outside and look in. And, and I can tell you, it's, it's wonderful to see the, the partnership, especially with Rushmore Region. Keep in mind that the funds for Rushmore Region is basically supporting the vendors that help promote the marketing tools, the materials, the sweat equity from the Ben Snows, the Brian Walkers, the Much Yousaras, it's all free. This, we're volunteering our time to make this happen. If you were to put all those dollars together, it would easily, Ben alone would be in the hundreds, but the rest of us would probably be maybe a few dollars more. So, but, but putting us together, if you think about the, the talent that makes this happen, it's, it's just amazing. It really is. Set Up, Center for Theoretical, the Underground Physics, these are basically the scientists from the science lab. They come here to the Black Hills. I don't know if all of you know this, about a hundred to a hundred and fifty scientists in the middle of July. They, they, they go up to Lead and Deadwood, they have conferences, they go to the lab, they talk, the theory. I suppose you can probably get a doctorate degree if you hang out with these people, but it's amazing. And for the thirty thousand dollars that we invest, we really just sponsor them, maybe help, you know, help reduce some of their costs. Ports to Plains, transportation is one of our new initiatives. We talked about Air Service Task Force, but Ports to Plains is very important in the Northern Hills. So that's what you're seeing here. And again, we support that at twenty-five thousand. What that does is that gets us a seat at the board. The Theodore Roosevelt Expressway is twenty-five thousand dollars. We have representation be, on behalf of Black Hills, the Black Hills region. That is very important when it comes to infrastructure shooting north. And of course, the International Collegiate Programming Contest, this is going to happen in twenty eighteen. We had some individuals, Dr. Gawen was one. I believe Julie Jensen's staff was also involved with this. Thanks, Julie. And this, you can't even vision this yet, because think about all of the IT companies, the IBMs, the Microsofts, coming to Rapid City for a collegiate competition like the Olympics, but for nerds. Think about this now. Oh, sorry about that. I, I'm a nerd too, but anyway, but think, think about what this is going to bring. As they, as we host this group, which will be somewhere between twenty-five hundred competitors, not including family, faculty, and corporations. I know as a company at Black Hills Corporation, we're going to participate in this. We, we definitely want to visit with the IBMs and the Microsofts. We want to bring those companies here to Rapid City and the Black Hills. Black Hills Air Service Partnership, again, the Delta is, is one of the newest ones we've been involved with, matching some dollars there. I know Julie's been involved with that, along with Linda and Ben. But again, we basically committed to a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to help match some federal DOT grant money. And then Rushmore Region Workforce Development, this was a new initiative. It is clear that workforce development is something we need to focus on. When we've been going to these private companies, if you don't know this, we've, we've visited with some, some of them have talked about not being able to get employees to fill their positions. Workforce development is going to be a challenge, and we're proud to be a, a sponsor in, in matching some of those dollars. Belfus Development Corporation, they're looking at a railway track, a kind of a depot where they can, at their industrial park. Now, you Now, you may think, well, okay, Belfus is going to actually benefit from this. It's not true. As we talk to other communities in the Northern Hills, there are other companies that will benefit using a depot in the Northern Hills. And Belfus is looking to invest over a million dollars. The city is going to invest a million. We're basically contributing about $50,000 to help them get started on their design work. So here's a real quick kind of an idea of what the funds were and have been committed so far. Transportation Corridor, again, is the future, we talked about that. Regional Energy Hub. Technology Corridor, these are the initiatives we're focusing on today. Community Investment, here are some of the communities. Bruce Rampelberg, by the way, is in Hot Springs. He's doing the same presentation to Hot Springs. And that's what we've been doing the past couple of months, is hitting the city and county governments to make sure we get them involved. Here's some of your private companies, which is a big player. Black Hills Corporation, I'm proud to say is a leading contributor, along with Regional Hospital and Black Hills Power, Federal Credit Union, US Bank, others, Dodge Town, and goes on and on. The Board of Directors, as you can see, our mayor here, Steve Allender, has a seat on the board as a major investor. Anytime the city or county invests 10,000 or more, they automatically have a seat on the board. They're not elected, they just come on the board. So Richie, you mentioned liaison, you have a liaison, and he has a vote. So very important to us. So every little bit helps, and that's what we're really trying to do, is continue that growth. And again, where else were these organizations would go? As I mentioned to the mayor today, I said, may I look at this? For an example, let's talk about Air Service Task Force. Where else are they going to go to ask for $175,000 for a match? Are they going to come here? Are they going to go to Black Hills Corp? Where are you going to go? The county? Here, you can come to Black Hills Vision, represented by every community in the Hills, every business that wants to see growth. And boom, you got your 175,000. It is truly similar to the United Way in economic development, if you think of it that way. No city, no investor has ever said, I'm going to give you $10,000, but I want it to go here. It goes into the pool, and then we determine through the Board of Directors how it's going to get spent. Questions?
Thank you much. Before we go to the queue, I guess I would like to ask our Finance Officer, Pauline, just for the record, as I did last time. I believe your request is 100. Well, would you please refresh the board what the request is?
Let me just start with, there is nothing in the budget for the Vision Fund in 2016. The last request came through the Vision process. For a five-year commitment of $500,000, we gave them $100,000 a year for each of those years. This is the last year of that. The five-year plan is done. So until we decide what we're doing with the Civic Center, what we're doing with the new ordinance as far as moving forward with the Vision Fund in that process, because we don't have to meet until 2016 according to the ordinance, there is nothing budgeted for any organizations or any groups in the Vision Fund for 2016 moving forward at this time. So currently, there is nothing in the budget for Black Hills Vision.
So what she's saying is you have time to save up.
Thank you much, but you were done.
Mr. President, if I...
Brad, you're killing me.
Basically, the presentation given tonight would have been perfect for a Vision meeting. But until we get to that point, there's nothing budgeted passed this year. I can't imagine that the council would not budget something for them because they have done so much for the region and for Rapid City, but at this point, there is nothing.
Thank you. I see no questions in the queue. With that, much, we'll excuse you, and thank you very much for your presentation. Next up, we will have a presentation by the Performing Arts Center, Mr. Nicholas Johnson, Mr. Johnson, before you start, I'm going to go back to the floor with our Finance Officer, and she can just, for the record, tell how much your request is, and then we'll turn the floor to you.
Thank you.
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. President. The request was for $26,350 for 2016. This could be found in the Community Investments Cost Center under Other Professional Services. The mayor did include this in his budget.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the City Council for inviting us here, and for Mayor Allender to put our request in the budget. I would like to thank the City Council for the past support they've given, especially Darla Drew Liddell for serving on our board this past year. We've appreciated her help. The Performing Arts Center would not be here without the Vision Funds that the city provided, starting back in 2009 of $3.2 million. So we're very grateful for the help. We're grateful for the assistance we received the past few years ago. So we're just coming back for a modest increase this year. I'm sorry, I do have a presentation that I'm just not quite sure what the, there we I'll make this very short, very short PowerPoint. I have a little video at the end, just to soften it up a bit for you as well. I know that today you're going to be hearing also from other arts organizations, and they will have a lot of information about the value of the arts to the community. And it is really an incredible boon to our community that we have such a strong arts program. So between the Allied Arts and the Arts Council, I think that we're a very lucky community, and there's a lot of reasons for that. I'm just going to give a little bit of a snapshot of what the Performing Arts Center provides in context with all of the arts in the community. You can see here, we've been in operation, actually opened for a little less than three years. We had a very good year this past year. If you look at statistics for attendance at the Performing Arts Center over the past few years, we went up from the first year, which was not a complete year, of almost 15,000, we've doubled that in two years, where now we had annual attendance of 30,000 at our events. If you're interested in all the specific events that did happen at the Performing Arts Center, the proposal that I just gave to you and was sent out in April has a whole list of events for the past three years with attendance statistics. But this has been a great year. The Performing Arts Center is getting a lot of use, we're seeing a lot of people through the doors. That last column is especially poignant, I think the youth participation at the Performing Arts Center is very strong, and that's a very integral portion of what we're doing to help the arts in the community and enhance the community. I'm just going to go through a few of the bullet points from the proposal we have, and just very briefly on these. As I said, we saw over 30,000 people through our doors this past year. That's professional performances, educational opportunities, public meetings, John Thune had an open house, we have teacher meetings for the school district in the big theater. So it's got a multiple use, and it really covers the gamut. And the point of that is the quality of life in Rapid City, I think, is enhanced by the Performing Arts Center to a great deal. We know that the creative communities, creative economies are really driven by the arts and relocation to community, new companies, whatnot. The arts opportunities afforded to them are very important for that. So I think that the economic impact of the arts can never be understated. And it's a very interesting study that the Americans for the Arts did. Now, it's a bit old, it's five years old, but it showed that in South Dakota, this was a South Dakota-specific study, that people attending arts events and excluding what they might spend on that event are paying about $17.20 per person. That translates into revenues of about $3 million to local entities throughout the states. That always, the economic impact of the arts, I think even for someone who's been in the arts their whole life, is always astounding. But there's a plethora of research behind that. In fact, I have an interesting study that one of our board members just found today about state funding for the arts, if anyone is interested in really delving down into the statistics and some of the research on that. There's more than enough available. If anyone ever liked to delve into that, I'd love to provide that for them. Now, I think close to everyone's heart is the participation of youth in the arts. And at the Performing Arts Center, we saw 4,500 youth attend events or participate in events, educational events, whether they're, as you can see in the picture here, whether they're doing a workshop through Black Hills Community Theater on set building or painting, acting, dancing. Dance schools are using our facility for annual recitals. So the number of kids through the door has been incredible this past year, and has really gone up over the last two years as well. One of the big reasons that's important is the impact that the arts can have on kids. Again, the statistics and the plethora of research can back up these claims that GPAs are higher, standardized test scores are higher, lower dropout rates. A program like Lifeways is crucial for Rapid City. We were happy to host one of their events this last year. And so to stand up here after them, they're doing some crucial work to really help save kids' lives. We think we are doing some crucial work to help kids' lives as well, so we appreciate that, the interrelationships we can have with organizations like Lifeways. Now, I wouldn't want to give all the fun to the kids, and this picture shows you why, maybe it's called a play. You've got a guy swinging on a rope there. These are adults who have the chance, about 500 adults had the chance to perform through choruses, symphony orchestra, community theater productions at the Performing Arts Center. So we're also providing artistic outlets for professional folks throughout the community. Very important part of that quality of life and enhancement of citizens' lives throughout Rapid City. We also pride ourselves, really the impetus of building the Performing Arts Center of Rapid City was to provide a home for some very specific organizations, the Black Hills Symphony Orchestra, the Black Hills Community Theater, the Showcase Chorus, Rapid City Children's Chorus. In addition to those resident companies, we also provide rehearsal space, performance space for at least 20 local nonprofits. So we're supporting the nonprofit sector in that way by providing some very affordable space. And at the same time, we're providing outlets for commercial promoters, again, the school district, for public meetings, a plethora of uses of the facility. But really, the main focus of the Performing Arts Center was to provide a home for these important arts organizations. And they really represent the bulk of that 30,000 of the attendance that comes through, and most of those kids and the educational opportunities. And we should never forget that the Performing Arts Center really was built on local support. The Vicarage Foundation has been helping us with our funding for these first three years of our startup, but there were well over 150 private donors who contributed to the center and continue to contribute to the organizations who are residents here. We have an excellent fundraising, there's excellent fundraising going on between the various organizations who are homes. The Performing Arts Center is ramping up their fundraising. Our first-ever large-scale fundraising event is happening this Friday, our special pop-up party called the Blue Moon Pop-Up Party, which should be a lot of fun. And it just shows that we're increasing our capacity for private funding as well as seeking grant funds and funding from the city. So really, in a nutshell, that is, that's what's been happening this past year and what's going on. I would entertain some questions from you. I think we do have a little short video, which if you would like to see that, we can roll that as well.
I guess it's up to the council. Would you like to see the video?
Sure. One minute, 14 seconds.
Go ahead and roll it.
Okay. Thank you for letting us see that. That just puts in pictures a bit of what I've tried to put in statistics and budget numbers, but again, thank you very much for your past support.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, and we'll go to the first, naming the queue here, we'll go to Alderwoman Darla Drew.
Thank you, President. I just have a couple of questions. When you started your presentation, Nick, I guess I didn't understand if you were looking for a modest increase or a one-time ask of infusion of funds.
I'm sorry, that would be a one-time ask. I meant a modest request for this year.
All right. And then also, what do you do for low-income kids programs or scholarships or things like that? Do you have anything like that on?
Most of the, most of our coalition members, the resident organizations, participate in many different programs to get free and reduced tickets into the hands of kids. The Allied Arts is very helpful in that, in partnering with all the arts organizations. We like to, all of our residents like to participate in that program to make sure that if donors would like to buy kids' tickets, that they can do that. There are a lot of free events as well throughout the, many of the events at the Performing Arts Center are free as well.
Well, I've enjoyed your edgier performances this year, so I'd encourage you to go more in that direction, actually, because I think it'll build those younger audiences for you. So thank you, I yield.
Thank you, Alderwoman Drew. If I could, I don't see any other names in the queue, I've got a question, a couple of questions. I'm looking at your fiscal year '15 and '16 budget, and I'm just trying to get a, you've got several sources of income, and I'm trying to differ, if you could differentiate those for me. You've got ticket sales and then box office income. What would be the difference between the two?
Box office income is really the fees collected by the box office to pay for their services to the various events. So when you buy a ticket and there's a $2 surcharge on it, that really covers the expenses of box office staff and credit card fees and costs that are sent to the online ticketing service. So when you see those fees at most venues, those are actually paying for an actual expense as well. So that is just fees collected to cover a real expense we have. And then ticket sales are literally just, in our case, much of the ticket sales that run through our box office are really taken on behalf of a client and then returned to them, minus whatever rent they pay for us. This next year, you'll see that number pops up because it's our intention to start actually presenting and promoting events ourself rather than just supporting those of other organizations.
Okay, then I see a line item called "performance rent." What would that be?
Performance rent is then what all of these organizations who are using the facility, the coalition members, the symphony, the private promoters, the community theater, that's what they pay us in return for using the facility for single events or for a week of events.
All right, thank you. And then on the expense side, I see this year you've got a janitorial plugged in for about $36,000, and the previous two years, it was zero. What's, tell me the difference there.
That really, if you delve into the original proposal we sent, was the impetus to come to you in the first place. The school district has been a big partner in this endeavor all along. They've provided that janitorial for the past two years at no cost. They provide the utilities and some maintenance on the facility itself. So of course, understanding their situation, they felt that they really needed for us to pay for custodial, and that was expected, we've been expecting that for the past year or so with the current situation. So that's a big increase in expenses that we're taking on, and that's one of the big reasons we're coming before you now.
Okay, I'm going to go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just looking at those same line items as our president was. On the $26,350 that you're asking for the city, and by the way, I just want to applaud you and your group, what you're doing for the performing arts. And also that you're just, what, a year on the job right now?
It feels like a couple, but it's been about a year and four months, yes.
Yeah, and doing fantastic work, and I applaud you for doing that, but my... Yeah, and, and doing fantastic work, and I applaud you for doing that, but my question has to do with the, uh, the investment from the city side. Have you got anything specific that that money is gonna go towards, or is that just gonna go into the general fund?
The, uh, it could go into the general fund, but really, the reason for asking for it was that custodial cost expense from the school district. So if, uh, if we were looking for one thing to spend your money on, it would be to, uh, for that custodial upkeep.
Thank you.
All right, I see no other, uh, no, no other lights in the queue. Mr. Johnson, I appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next up on the list, uh, is, is c- community investments. Now, we have eight different community investments listed here. Our intent tonight is to, uh, th- this could go really good or this could be a real wreck. So, [laughing] so, so what I intend to do is, is name, name it off. Na- yeah, well, yeah, Pepper is involved, no. [laughing] I intend to start with number one, I'll name it. I'm gonna ask Pauline, if she could, to tell us what, what, what's it, what's the budget, where the line item is, and if it's in the budget, and then I will ask the council for questions. And if we have no questions, we're gonna go on to the next one. So with that in mind, uh, the first, number one, is Allied Arts, and we have Mrs. Loggie here with us, and, uh, Pauline, if you would.
There's a hundred and two thousand dollars in the community investments budget for the Allied Arts. They get one half, basically, of what is in the contingency line item. The other half goes to the health and human services aspect.
Thank you, and I have no lights in the queue, going once, going twice. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thanks for all the-
Second, uh, the second, uh, community investments i- is the DALL. We have, uh, Pepper Massey here, and, uh, Pauline, please.
Okay, the DALL, they have their own cost center, so you'll see that, um, in your budget. They actually, the original request was two-thirty-nine, two-seventy, and we put it back to the two-thousand-and-fifteen funding level at two-fifteen, zero-zero-four.
All right, and I see, uh, no lights in the queue. Pepper, thank you for coming. Uh, number three, we have the Humane Society of the Black Hills, and we have Jackie Harvey here. Um, Pauline?
Again, they have their own cost center for the Humane Society. The budget is for two-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand dollars, and I believe that is a three percent increase, and that was at the direction of the police chief.
Okay, um, I see no, no questions in the queue. Ms. Harvey, thank you for, thank you for coming. Uh, next up is the Convention and Visitors Bureau. We have Julie Jensen here, and Pauline, if you would.
They are actually found in a cost center within the Civic Center Fund. We're working on a way to maybe get them out of the Civic Center Fund, 'cause truly it is just a flow-through.
Mm-hmm.
Um, with that, we budgeted one million dollars for twenty-sixteen, but our agreement is that they get twenty-five percent of whatever the BBB tax is, so that can, the actual will vary based on how much we actually collect.
Thank you. I see no lights in the queue. Julie, thank you for coming. Uh, next is the Chamber of Commerce. We have Linda Raby here.
And they also, I believe, have their own cost center. It's called advertising, and they requested, and it is included in the budget for thirty-four thousand. I believe twenty-fifteen is thirty-three thousand.
Okay.
Oh, Tracy, correct me, it's thirty-four thousand this year also.
All right, I see no lights in the queue. Linda, thank you for coming. Next up, we have Wavy. We have Mary, uh, is it Corb- Corb- Corbine? Uh, Pauline?
Wavy actually is a line item within the police department budget, and the amount budgeted is one-hundred-and-eight-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, which again, I believe is a three percent increase.
Well, Mary, I see no lights in the queue, so I don't think anybody has any questions for you tonight. Thank you for coming. Next up is Elsworth Task Force. We have Jeff, Jeff Karzadru.
Elsworth Task Force, it's in the budget for seventy-five thousand dollars. There's a cost center called Economic Development, and they are in that, they have their line item in their, um, in that cost center.
Thank you. Again, no lights in the queue. Mr. Karzadru, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Uh, eighth and final is Rapid City Economic Development. We have Ben Snow here. Economic Development, please.
Thank you. That amount in the budget is two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, and they are the other line item within the Economic Development Cost Center in the General Fund.
Thank you. I see, uh, no lights. Now, we went through this pretty quick. Does anybody want to go back? If, if somebody's caught in the room, uh, with this, just, uh, everybody, we good to go here? Oh, excuse me, sorry, we'll go to Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm just kinda looking at community investments, and I understand there's, uh, effort to be, I'll say, realignment of placement, uh, for the cost centers for all of these different groups that were just mentioned. But gen- in general, and my question is, have, are all of these investments going up at about three percent?
Some of them received increases in previous years, while others did not, and so others are receiving increases this year when they did not receive them in the past.
Thank you, Pauline.
Does that make sense?
And if I can follow up on that, is I'm just looking at the, uh, line item in the budget, six-twenty-one, uh, community investments. I am looking at approximately twelve, oops, disappeared on me, approximately twelve percent something, and, um, I just wondered what, what the difference on that was.
If you look at the bottom line on that, that percentage is going to be large, but that's because we added the performing arts request for twenty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty into that cost center.
Okay, thank you, I'll yield.
Thank you, Richie. We'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you. Pauline, on this, is the, are these the ones that you said that you put out the request to have their estimated revenues for twenty-sixteen, and you just haven't, um, been able to, to compile those yet, and those will be compiled and presented before the city council?
Correct. I have a slew of emails. I was in training all day, so I wasn't able to get those printed off or forwarded out, so I will get those to you yet.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. President, I think that's the reason we don't have any questions, is as long as, in the past, we've always asked for that type of information so we can compare what the city contributes and what operating portion of their budget. So as long as that information has already been provided, great job for all of them that have provided that information. Thank you.
And, and once you have those, if you have any questions, um, you can route them through us, and we'll get the answers and then share all that with the, the whole council.
Alderwoman Darla Drew.
Um, thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Pauline, I noticed that, um, the Rapid City Arts Council, the DALL, is the only one that, um, asked for an increase, but, um, they weren't given that. They were funded at the same level as last year. Is there a reason for that? Do you know?
That is what the request of the, the mayor was. I know, I believe it was former Mayor Quaker that started that process. Nothing changed when Mayor Allender came into office. We tried to follow the guidelines and, and stick within those. They received quite a few increases in the, in the past, and also based on actuals, they've had to come in and ask for supplemental appropriations as well, the way our MOU is written. So we're hoping that in the way that the budget is outlined now, there will be less of a need for a supplemental appropriation. But, but part of it is because they've gotten so much more in the past, and we're trying to get them back to where we can, um, we, we think that they should be.
So what, what you've seen as far as their, their funding requests, you think the two-hundred-and-fifteen is gonna cover what they really need this year, or will they be back for supplemental?
Depends on how they stay within their budget line items. I will tell you that we ha- we have the same situation between the DALL and the Journey as far as they, they manage our facility.
Right.
But the MOUs are written quite differently, and, which is, has always been a frustration of mine. With the Journey, we pay, um, it's like, I don't know, I'm gonna say three-twenty-five, 'cause that's what it used to be, and I know that number's different now. We pay that amount. We used to pay their bills out for utilities and insurance and everything for the maintenance of the facility, not only the building but also the grounds. And then we'd also gave them a management fee. Well, in December, we would look at their budget versus actual expenses and then adjust their last and, or last payment, so that we always stayed within the three-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar budget. That's different with the DALL. The DALL, they get one-twelfth of their management fee every month, plus we pay out their bills. And so if electricity comes in higher than they budgeted, we have to pay it. That's the way the, the agreement reads. And so that's why in the past, there's been some, uh, need for supplemental appropriations, 'cause some of those line item co- has come in higher than what has been budgeted. We, we don't deduct it from their management fee like we do from, for the Journey. And so this year, to meet all the other, um, guidelines given as far as, here's our rate for, and for electricity and water and that type of thing, the management fee actually went down, uh, just a little bit to make up that difference, because we have seen in the past where they don't budget what is needed to be budgeted in the line items, and we end up paying it in the end. And so even though we budget amount, it never falls within that dollar amount.
And so as I understand it, then, um, just for clarity here, the Journey doesn't have a, um, a, a fee for their, their, um, executive position that is paid for by the city, just the Rapid City Arts Council? Is that correct?
No, they both have fees, but we adjust the last fee of the year for the Journey, so we don't go over the budget. So if you only budget three-twenty-five for the Journey, that's all we spend on the Journey. Where with the DALL, we can budget two-twenty-five, and because of the way our MOU is written, we end up paying two-fifty, because expenses come in higher, 'cause we don't adjust it.
Those expenses, um, maintenance or utilities, those kinds of costs, is that what's going up?
Some of-
So it's not mismanagement, it's just simply fees going up?
It's, the budget's not being budgeted appropriately per line item.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, see no other lights in the queue. Thanks, everyone, and, and be looking for your emails if, if we have questions, and we look forward to seeing your income, the income side of your equations that have, that have been requested by, by finance officer assumption. Chad Lewis.
Pepper, do you have something you'd like to add to that?
I, I do.
Identify yourself, please. Thank you.
I do. Um, I, I suppose, I understand how we ri- arrived at that conclusion. One of the challenges we've been fighting, uh, has to do with utilities, and the biggest, the largest overage that we have is utilities. And, uh, utilities have gone up, um, I think about thirty percent, thirty-four percent in the last three years. We haven't, and I'm not just talking about the DALL, I'm talking about, uh, across the board. We can't, on no increase or a three percent increase, overcome that amount. The other thing, um, that I wanted to bring up is we don't have control of our thermostat. That is, the city controls our thermostat. There are times when it's frigid in our galleries. So I asked our facility person to run the numbers on that, and, um, over the course of a month, uh, our thermostat has several times been for days in the sixty-one to sixty-three degree area. We're, we're not setting it that low. We're trying to get it up. What happens is in the city, they get an alarm, so they adjust the thermostat, and then it comes down really low, and then it remains that way for several days. It could be over a weekend, and then somehow, uh, once we discover this, it gets adjusted. So we're being, uh, penalized for an increase in utilities and also an inability to be able to control what happens in our building. And I, I would say if you've ever come by our building, we're, we're quite, quite frugal. What I'm understanding is that we're mismanaging our funds and overspending in areas. I can defend absolutely every line item in that budget. Um, and part of the other challenge that we have is our building no longer has warranty on many items. We've got a five-year elevator, um, uh, service that, that's huge this year. We don't have the luxury of having service contracts for this. So, um, I'm not certain that it's fair that we're being penalized for things that are, aren't in our control.
Thank you. Mr. Karzadru, you had, you'd asked for, I guess, I guess, here's what we, uh, we weren't having any presentations, but Mr. Kar- were you asking for two minutes?
Just two minutes, if that's okay.
Sure.
We've got some changes in our organization, and I just want to make sure everybody was aware of that. My name is Jeff Karzadru. I'm the new chairman of the Elsworth Task Force, and will be the face and the, uh, and the communication for the Elsworth Task Force, uh, moving forward. And just wanted to make sure that, uh, everybody understood what we do. We, uh, much like the, uh, South Dakota Development Authority, they have certain tasks that they do. We do the same thing. And we, uh, we support the modern, modernization of the B-one bomber, but most importantly, right now, Elsworth Air Forces, uh, Elfor- Elsworth Air Force Base is going away from air combat command and going to global strike. That's significant because global strike houses the B-52 and the B-2, which are the bombers. We're under the flights of, we're, we're under the, uh, control of the fighters and, and the non-nuclear. So going forward, the long-range bomber, which will replace the B-52 and the B-1, will be under that care. So we're gonna be one of five bases that are vying for two bases for the long-range strike. So, and, at, as we speak, our executive director is at the change of command at Barksdale for the global strike. So, um, let's see if there's anything. I'm gonna, I'm gonna just skip a bunch of stuff. Our modest ask of seventy-five thousand is, uh, is mainly for a salary of one person, and then it's travel to meet with the B-one folks, which is the Boeing, uh, Lockheed Martin, Northrop Grumman, and the air, and the air force officials on the national level, so just, it's about relationships, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
You bet.
All right, oh, excuse me, we have Alderman Steve Lorente.
Thank you, Chair. Jeff, I, I was trying to, I wanted to grab you, I could've just chimed in before.
Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you, Jeff.
You bet.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Mm-hmm.
We had some issues last year.
Yes.
Your group did, I should say, with, um, the county.
Yes.
How is that working this year with this next budget year?
Well, I'm gonna approach this cautiously.
Diplomatically.
Yes.
I hear that.
Um, there was, there was some, uh, political grandstanding, in my opinion, that happened, and it, and it, and it actually started within this area, and then, uh, asked for some teamwork amongst the county. So, um, we've since then been able to get the things resolved within the city of Rapid City. But I think the county, right now, is looking for any way to cut any possible line item they can, and they got some cover from that activity six months ago. So I think they're gonna, they're gonna hold with that stance this year, and, uh, I have, uh, went to the, uh, the hearings for the twenty-sixteen. Not sure how that's gonna go. Um, we, we are going to change our budget from a hundred thousand, as you see right there, to seventy-five, and we're gonna go totally bare bones, and we'll make it happen. And, and we realize that if, that if Pennington County doesn't, uh, wanna team up, then we'll have to, to, uh, get the cooperation of some of the other counties within the state that may realize the, the value of Elsworth Air Force Base.
I have one more question for you too, but I just wanted to mention to anybody who's viewing that, uh, I, I would encourage them to contact their county commissioners.
Yes.
'Cause unfortunately, uh, this has become political with the county, and to me, supporting your group, um, knowing the financial impact that Elsworth supplies to the entire region, let alone Rapid City and Pennington County, um, I want to strongly encourage anybody viewing or anybody in this room to contact their county commissioners and to let them know clearly how much they need to continue to support your group and the importance of it. My last question for you is, on the, uh, working out at Elsworth at the finance center, I'm aware of the realignment- aware of the realignment with the global strike command as well. My question to you is, do you have some sense of the competition with the new bomber that's going to replace the B-1 as well, which is what Ellsworth has today? How will the Powder River Training Area impact that? Do you see that as a very important part of that competition? Or do you even see it as a competition between two bases, from what I understand, so?
It's definitely a competition. There's a reason why, when you look up the Powder River Training Complex, it's labeled controversial because of the timing of the, because we just signed it into action, the Air Force just signed it into action just about six months ago. And it's prior to any, to our next round of BRAC that may come up. So I guarantee the other bases are a little nervous about that. How we stack up against the other five bases, I'm not going to list any names, but we've obviously got a good shot at it. If we weren't, if, I think it's obvious without stating the implications, if we did not get the long-range strike bomber, what would happen at Ellsworth? It would be a pretty tough go out there. I would say that the folks to our direct south have a good shot at it. A major player has got some training facilities and some timing issues, which may take them out of at least the first round, which is the first base. They're probably going to give it to two bases. So, and then you get our base to the north, to the northeast, and they've got a good shot at it, too. But the climate maybe is not as conducive as us or maybe further south. So it's, again, it's all about relationships.
Right. Thank you.
And for a hundred thousand, you get a team of the community along with the Chamber of Commerce, and then we also, I'll define our board. We've got myself as the chair, Matt McGrath as the executive director, and on the executive board, Pat McLagan, Al Cornella, and Chris Lee. And then we also have another layer underneath that, which is the membership, and it's about twenty to twenty-five strong of great advocates, too.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
Thanks, Steve, and thank you, everybody. I don't see any other lights in the queue. So we'll go on next to Destination Rapid City, and we have Dan Sefton in the house. Dan, floor's yours.
Just so you know, Mr. President, the request was for eighty thousand dollars. The mayor included eighty thousand dollars in the budget is actually under the Parks budget, I believe under other professional services.
Thank you, Dan. We can do one of two things. I love the queue idea. It's a great idea. It's perfect. I do, I do have a short slide presentation, if you want to see it, about downtown. I think you can close your eyes and kind of see downtown if you want to. We're swinging. We're rocking. Things are happening. There's nothing more exciting than what we see when we walk on our downtown Main Street, St. Joe Street, and what's going on. Manuel DeVall is with, here with me tonight. He only had thirty-three years at the Civic Center. He's been with us now at Destination Rapid City for five, runs a downtown clean team. And I said something to John McLaughlin today at the Journal. I said, you know, John, what you need to do is ride and get up with Manuel at four o'clock and meet him at five and start the downtown cleanup. There's a lot of things that are going on. And again, it's long-term sustainability that I'm looking at. I can do a very short PowerPoint. I know it's loaded up, if you want to see what's going on. But I'm telling you, we do recycling. We do a bunch of it. We've got eight ninety-six gallon containers that are dumped twice a week. We do garbage pickup. I said to someone today, if you want to see what's going on, have a stop for two weeks. Then you'll really notice the difference. People really notice when it's clean or when it's not clean, but sometimes they kind of forget when it isn't. So, once again, you know, I am open for questions. We can do a short PowerPoint. I've got a fourteen, fifteen slide. It wouldn't take very long. But however, I think you can close your eyes. You can walk downtown. You can see downtown. You can see what's going on. I've been here now forty-one years. Dang it, I hate to admit that. But I'm looking at stuff I haven't seen in a long time in my life, and it's really fun just to be here. And every day, we see someone on the street who says, wow, you really have a downtown that we would like to have in our city. And I've been contacted by so many communities in the last ninety days. It's just amazing. So what we have is a great deal. What we're looking at is sustainability. We're looking at long-term. We all know we've been funded privately for the last several years. And what we're looking at and what we're talking about is, you know what, we need to step up as a group and as a team, and we need to do long-term sustainability. You know, I'm asking for eighty-plus thousand dollars this year in 2016 and over the next several years. But truly, our community now is vibrant and standing forward, and it's really what we need to be talking about. Because we talk about the DOL, talk about the performing arts, we talk about, right here where we stand, guess where it's connected? All of it's right downtown. Walk through a vibrant downtown or walk through one that's not. Make your choice.
Thank you, Dan. We'll go to Alderman Ron Wyfenbach, if that's okay. Are you ready for questions?
Always.
Ron?
Thank you, Mr. President. I got to admit, Mr. Sefton, this, I don't think anybody's going to argue about the vibrancy of downtown. But I also don't think anybody's going to argument about the commitment that the taxpayers have given to downtown, even though it's a retail organization that drives profits. This one caught me by surprise. When we originally built Main Street Square, we committed a hundred thousand dollars a year for, I think it was a period of five years. Destination Rapid City came in and said, we don't need that money anymore. So I come back to the budget meetings and I see a line item for eighty thousand dollars, which I completely don't understand what it's for. So I guess I'm looking for this, an explanation of why you need it, what it's for, and how it benefits the taxpayers of Rapid City.
I think everything benefits the taxpayers in our downtown group. Things change, Ron. People change. Environments change. Things come and they go. You and I both know, we've been through several council people in the last seven to ten years, several mayors. Things change. What I'm talking about is making sure that it doesn't change. Making sure that the next year, and the next year, and the next year, and the next year are there. And Destination Rapid City has done a lot of funding. We're talking millions of dollars of private funding that have come into this. But I'm looking at long-term. I'm not looking at a short term here. I'm thinking about, what's Rapid City in ten years, fifteen, twenty years? Yes, it has changed. The desires have changed. The needs have changed. However, we're looking at not just the next year. We're looking at ten years, fifteen years, twenty years. So I'm thinking about, you know what, we do an awful lot of work downtown. We pick up garbage. We do recycling. We pick up glass. Come down at five o'clock on a Friday morning and take a look after summer nights when ten thousand people come downtown. See what it takes to pick that up and clean that up. If Parks and Recs had to do that, and the city had to do that, it would be a total nightmare in a very quick time. So what I'm saying is, I'm looking at long-term right now. We've carried a lot of load here, and I'm just saying, we need to work together as a team. This funding will not cover nearly what we all do, not even close. However, it does cover and it does help the long-term sustainability. And again, it's not about next year, year two, or three, or five. It's about the next fifteen to twenty.
Right. I understand that. I understand.
Downtown's not going away.
Yeah, but I understand all that, and I understand the benefit of downtown. I've been in on, I mean, I flew in early from Arizona from a vacation to make a vote one night to support the downtown. So I just want, that being said, I still don't understand where this one is going. If it's going to pick up trash from summer nights, is it going to pick up trash from the people that own the businesses downtown?
Let's run through the quick PowerPoint. Load it up.
That'd be perfect.
I think we've been there. This was our mission statement when we started in 2007. And vibrant city center is what we were after. I have been here, again, forty-one years. I've seen it when it's completely the other way, and you could park a pickup and a horse trailer downtown anywhere you wanted, and there was never a parking problem. Let's take a quick look at this. This was one of our visions. What did we have and what do we have? Two completely different things. And it's about the why. Why do we want this? Why do we need this? We want this for our community. Let's take a look about recycling. Destination Rapid City spent a hundred and sixty thousand dollars on new garbage cans and recycling in 2011. We now recycle thousands of cans and bottles a year, which we never did before. This is all part of our downtown team. That is obviously Manny, looking at the different things that we pick up every single morning. Again, starting at 5:00 a.m., we do the shrubs. Again, we work with Parks and Recs. They are not out of the picture. We meet with them at the spring of every year to see whose jobs are what. We take a look at our alley. We have hauled out refrigerators, freezers, carpets. I can't even tell you what we've hauled out of these alleys and taken to the dump. It is endless. I could put them in your backyard and they would stack up for a year. You take a look what we do. We take a look at the cleaning of the nodes. We empty five-gallon pails a week of cigarette butts. Five-gallon pails a week, just of cigarette butts that we pick up and that we pick up in our recycling. We water flowers, a hundred and four of them a day, every single morning, to take care of downtown. We welcome people to Rapid City. We've got ambassadors on the street. We meet buses. Right now, we meet over fifty tour buses across from Prairie Edge by Main Street Square on a daily basis to make sure we welcome our visitors to downtown, which we never did before. We do snow removal in the wintertime, and we do the best we can to keep track of that so people can walk a first path on the street. You know what? That's our vision and that's our statement. And that's where we are. It is not easy. Jump on that train at 5:00 a.m. and get on the back of that chariot. It is a lot of work. What we have done, and I told John McLaughlin today when he called me, we have outgrown ourselves. We are bigger than we thought we would ever be. When we started the clean team, we were one guy. One guy. Myself, one guy, and one gallon in an office. Hey, Ron, we've outgrown that. We're bigger than we thought we would be. We have more people than we ever dreamt. We're estimating seven hundred thousand people coming through Main Street Square. Our water bill last month was thirty-five hundred bucks just for the fountain alone. Things have changed. We're bigger than we thought we would be. That's why I'm back. That would be the reasoning.
Thank you.
See no other lights in the queue. Any other questions? Thank you, Dan. Next up, we have the Journey Museum and Troy Kilpatrick.
The budget for the Journey remains at three thirty-one, five hundred. That's the same as 2015, and they do have their own cost center.
Thank you, Pauline.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time and thanks for the invitation to be here tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to give you guys a report card on our progress since the last time I was here. I'd also like to recognize Councilman Nordstrom for all of his hard work and efforts through the Journey Museum Alliance of Rapid City. On the Board of Directors, he's contributed a ton of time. So thank you. I have a short PowerPoint. How do I start it? Okay. I'm not sure this is the right one. I'll start. Journey Museum, just so you guys, as a reminder, we opened in 1997, so we're already eighteen years of age. And that's an interesting point to kind of remind ourselves, because we are going to talk about building expenses and what's going into maintaining the facility. The Journey Museum is also a very unique collaboration. And just as a reminder, we have five partners. There's not many museums that are organized quite like this. I mentioned that we are organized under the Museum Alliance of Rapid City, and our partners are shown here in their logos. And as a reminder, as they're seen in our museum, South Dakota School of Mines, Museum of Geology and Paleontology, South Dakota Archaeological Research Center for archaeology and all of our history there, the Sioux Indian Museum, which is part of the Indian Arts and Crafts Board, the Department of Interior, Menelusa Pioneer Museum, which is our local Rapid City history and pioneer history. This is definitely the wrong presentation. I should be pulling up the PowerPoint that says city council presentation off that jump drive. You guys got a Museum Alliance of Rapid City PowerPoint in front of you right now, so I could ad lib about that, I guess. I have fifteen Board of Directors, five partners. I have lots of bosses, so, and you guys. So there you go. Somehow this didn't go as I envisioned. The first slide actually says progress report, which is why I was thinking.
Did Charlie go to the IT to see if they're booting the? Think we found it? All right. Thank you.
Take two, right? Okay, so, again, I've been there for about a year and a half now as the executive director. And as I stood here a year ago, one of our big changes was broadening the brand to Learning Center, which you see the updated and revised logo there. Kind of speed through these initial slides of our partners, since we covered that before. And as a reminder, the city of Rapid City, you guys are a huge partnership to us in terms of the support of the building. And keeping that in track, and I'm sure we'll have some conversation about that as we go forward. And again, here is the revised and broadened brand of Learning Center that we add to the Journey Museum. We really brought that into play in May of last year. And so now we've got a full year of traction to kind of give you guys some updates on how we're doing. The museum used to be classically just a museum visitation, and we've worked hard at trying to add more to our visitors, both our community members and our visitors coming. We use the theater every day with providing additional videos. The Journey introduction video was always a part of the Journey Museum. We've also got three other videos that the Journey has been a part of creating, and that is Lakota Star Knowledge, and then also the One Night in June, which talks about the flood here in Rapid City. We also have a version of Over the Black Hills, which is produced by South Dakota Public TV. And today, we're with our Oscar Howe Centennial Celebration exhibit. We are showing a video in the theater capturing Oscar Howe's career. So we're really trying to add more to the museum experience, even though it's a great experience there. And we're building on education. You may or may not be aware of the fact that at one point, we had a NASA grant, and the Uniview program is a program about the solar system and the stars. We have coupled an outreach program where we go to schools. And Planetarium, that's a picture inside the Planetarium on the right. So we educate lots of area children with the Planetarium. And we do, over the course of the summer, provide night sky journey in our theater every day as an interactive experience. We have really been focused in the past year at trying to make sure we're providing more interaction with our audiences and our guests. Our learning lab, that you see up on the left-hand side of the screen, there are group and tour, group and tour experiences with classrooms. We do interact, the talks in our, in our facility itself. You see on the right, our council fires presentation by one of our museum aides at the Sioux Indian Museum. And then just interactive opportunities for the kids to be able to be engaged in the museum, like the dig pit there. We also have invested in our education, programming and staffing by having different class experiences for kids. Target age, ten to fourteen. In the summer months, we do these classes on Tuesdays and Fridays. In the winter, Wednesday afternoons and Saturdays. It's an opportunity for us to keep the museum fresh by teaching every day. It's a way to get people to come back in. It's been a huge component in us selling and gaining more memberships and creating more use in our museum. It's a real backbone to what we're doing. It's not just about kids. It's also about adults. We are committed to bringing sixteen different learning forums to our theater over the course of the year. Those are the last three that we had in our theater itself. You can see the diversity from the flood to the Battle of Greasy Grass, which was Little Big Horn, to a reenactor portraying Thomas Jefferson. Those are the last three that we've provided. So we have on purpose a diverse and eclectic type of learning forum. So we have on purpose a diverse and eclectic type of learning forum, so we can bring different types of audiences into our facility. How's all this education working for us? Again, I'm glad to be able to provide some insight to you. These numbers here are through June 30th. Comparing January through June 2014 to 2015, you can see that our education, this includes our outreach, so like our Planetarium programming too, we're up 2,473, or 48%, in the first six months of the year. And that's having an impact on our year-to-date total audience. This is again through June 30th. We're up 4,253 over a year prior. Both memberships, our membership sales to families, individuals, and couples is up about 2%, and our friends, which are significant donors, people who contribute more than $250, is up 20%. So those are good numbers, showing that people are engaged in our museum and our facility. But it's not just about that, it's also audience feedback. We're very, very much watching what's happening on TripAdvisor, working hard to be a part of Black Hills Badlands Lakes, the CBB, presenting ourselves to the tourism corridor. We have a four-and-a-half-out-of-five-star ranking. I don't think five's possible. If you get more than a couple of reviews, all it takes is one guy to ding you a little bit, and down you go. And there you see, we grabbed that from today, basically, what is the latest. We're really probably just got named in the top 50 museums by True West Magazine. That'll be out in the next month here. And just some ones that were really kind of cool is being named number one as one of the hidden gems in the Black Hills by Buffalo Chip before the rally, and being named number one place to visit by Midwest Travel when visiting Rapid City. So again, we're trying to contribute and be a part of that economic corridor for tourisms and a place for our community and family members. We have some great things to jump on the back of. It's the city of presidents, it's Main Street Square, as Dan was talking about. Our programming, as you can see on the right, we hand out a little daily sheet for all the different videos and interactive experiences. Our goal is to keep people in the museum for at least a day. Our admissions are good for two. We hope we can keep them for one more night in a hotel here in Rapid City, so we can sell them that hotel room and get some more meals and beverages sold to them and contribute to everything that's going on here. So we're working hard at trying to pull ourselves right into the corridor of what's happening in the center of the city. Here's another good stat for us to talk about is the number of community events we've hosted, and we're up double, we're up 56. And what do I mean by community events? It's events like the gathering of the wind, water, and people, Native American arts contests that we hosted here a couple of weeks ago. The University of South Dakota Alumni Foundation had an event here. The Department of Interior is hosting three days of cultural training right now in our museum. All of these things add up to us being a part of contributing to the community, contributing to a more vibrant place for us to live, and we're really proud to be a host and we're excited. Just in the next few months, we'll be hosting a Leadership Rapid City, the new class that'll be coming onboard. We'll also be hosting the December Young Professionals Group, Chamber Group for the Christmas Mixer, and in January, we'll be hosting the Annual Chambers Award. So we're excited to be chosen as a host facility. We work hard at that. We think that helps expose more people to what's going on at the Journey. And here's really the bottom line, is I don't know if Pauline had the opportunity, I sent you a year-to-date, January to June. I've excluded in-kind revenues and expenses, to be fair, and so revenues compared to revenues, we're up 4.4% year-to-date. Our expenses were down 8.5%. So you know, we're trying to do the right things in terms of how we're looking at our budgeting, but here's some of our challenges, as in prior conversations, utilities, repairs, and maintenance. We've had a string of bad luck. We've had like $9,000 worth of plumbing issues. It prompted me to ask Tracy, what's my deductible? $10,000, of course. So we've had some lights kicked over, we've had a bunch of vandalism, we've had people trying to get into the back doorways of the museum. Myself and the building manager were called down there two or three nights in the month of June. The good news is the security systems held up. Our police department was there, but we had to, we changed the way the back doors were so that there's no doorknobs and handles there. We replated those. All this, you know, one of, two of those things don't seem like much money, but when you're kind of on the edge of not really making it to the black to begin with, a couple thousand dollars of lights being broken, or a couple thousand dollars worth of door problems and stuff, it all starts to really add up. And you'll see on the P&amp;L that if we could have been flat the year prior, we'd basically be breaking even at the museum. So it's a little frustrating because we're going backwards in some regards, but you have to do what you have to do to take care of the facility, too. As Pauline mentioned, we're requesting the same amount as before. I am hoping that by working through CIP, we are requesting projects that we think will help the footprint of the building cost less, and I maybe shouldn't be bringing that up here, but I think it's important that you guys know that we're trying to work through all the processes. And there's some big-dollar projects there that we can't come up with the dollars, that we have to look at something like CIP to be able to do the right things to reduce some of these other footprints expenses. So I close by showing you a couple pictures of some great interactions with audiences here just in the last couple of months. A theater full of kids, school buses that we're educating, an event that we hosted in the lobby, and I say, maybe cliche, but the journey continues, and I appreciate your support. We'll take any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Troy. We'll go to Alderman Ron Weifler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Kilpatrick. I got a question that just, it's been asked year after year. It's at what point do you prioritize and say $340,000 a year? Maybe we should rethink what we're doing?
Well, I think we're doing the right things when we show the community engagement, Ron. I mean, that's why I put that up there, is that, you know, the community, part of the goals is to provide a cultural learning place, to provide a place that enriches the community, and I think the Journey Museum does all of that. In a lot of places, museums are free. You know, we are charging admissions. So we're in a uniquely challenging, different situation, but I think we're doing the right things. So I don't ask that question.
Pardon?
I don't really look at it that way, I guess, Ron.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other lights in the queue. Mr. Kilpatrick, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
For your time. We're just almost to the end. Anybody need to take a break, or should we march through? March through? All right. We have Mr. Jim McShane with the library. Pauline, could you share with us the...
I believe Mr. McShane is planning on sharing with you his budgeted amounts.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. As long as they have it in front of them, it's okay.
They're like this? Are they like, are they like Ron? Mr. McShane, you have the floor. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I don't know where Ron is, but, or Rod, I should say, but that's okay. I have a short presentation for you tonight. We went over and did a presentation for the library about a month or so ago. So you know all about our streaming videos and audios and everything that we've got. Circulation up over a million again, six years in a row, that type of thing. So I won't go over that. Our overall budget increase this year is going to be 3.3% that we're asking for, and just wanted to highlight a few of the things that we have coming in the next year or so. The big one being the mobile branch that we hope to launch sometime next year, that we'll be able to outreach to daycare and preschool places, public schools, nursing homes, assisted living facilities, hospitals, as well as businesses. Bringing materials and services to places around Rapid City, and with any luck, the county as well. We also have a Makerspace, which will be launching August 8th downtown. It's a partnership with the DOL, and it includes high and low-tech craft folk that will be displaying their wares between our two great organizations, so we're looking forward to that. As well as, we currently have a lot of noise going into the, going on in the library with our local history room. It started construction last week, and it should be finished in, at the end of September. This will house our genealogy collection as well as local history material, and we're hoping that it's going to be a showplace that will make Rapid City proud. Other than that, we tried to balance off the budget as much as possible, taking a little bit from some places and adding in other places, and as I say, I think we came up with a pretty good balance. We have a pretty conservative board, and if Rod was here, he'd let you know that. However, I'm sure you've heard him before. So if anybody has any other questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Jim. We'll go to Alderman Ron Weifler.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that you guys cut the ties with WDT.
That's right.
Didn't that, wouldn't that cut your staffing?
No. We had one person essentially over there at any one particular time.
So you had one full-time person there?
We did have, yes, a one FTE.
Okay. So what's going to happen with that one FTE?
We have plenty of other places where they can actually work. When we took over General Beetle as well as WDT, we did not get any extra funding from the county in order to do that. And so as far as WDT goes, the school itself got a million dollars for that building, but the library didn't get any more funding. So we essentially took a full-time employee from staff and used that person over there at WDT.
Yeah. That's not relative to General Beetle, though.
Well, it's the same thing, actually. But that's true, that's true.
Because General Beetle had staff increases, one and a half FTE or two, I can't remember what the number was, when they, when they put that in, because I wasn't on that deal, I know. So, and you also have some funding changes with the county there.
Well, we don't know that at the moment. We're in negotiations with them, and so we're talking to some of the council members in order to figure out how that's going to go forward.
But they weren't paying anything at WDT?
No more than we had been getting before that, no.
So they were the same, it was the same number before we opened WDT as it was?
That's right, that's right, yes. Except for yearly increases, of course, but...
But now you're absorbing that one FTE at WDT and then asking for an increase?
Yes.
Here, today? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ron. We'll go to Alderman Steve Lorente.
Thank you, Chair. Jim, can you just kind of briefly go over the mobile library effort? And then my question to you, if you want to answer it after your little summary of that again, is, is that budgeted in your side in your 2016 budget? Are you budgeting for that in 2016? Thank you.
Well, that currently is part of, let's see, what line would that be? $4390 has the mobile branch in it, and currently, what we're trying to do is to fund that through grants and contributions through organizations like our Friends of the Library, as well as our foundation.
So that currently isn't budgeted right now? It does not have its own budget?
Not for 2015, no.
Okay. 2016?
2016, yes, it will.
Alderman Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. McShane, just a couple of things that, I'm one of those people that are disappointed in the outcome of what happened with WDT, but since the horse has left the barn, I don't see anything else we can do with that, unless there's something that is coming up on the horizon that I haven't heard about.
Well, we're certainly not against any kind of talks with them, and I understand that they have a new president. If they are willing to extend some sort of willingness to talk over that. You know, again, we had some bumps in the road, and it benefited, I think, we had problems with customer service in those areas, and we would be willing to talk over smoothing them out and making an effort in that. I think it's all just about serving the people of Pennington County, and we felt that through mobile branch, we would be more able to do that, and certainly more effectively, and bring it to various places around the county as well.
Can I make a comment on that, Richie?
Sure, Rod, go ahead.
Sorry I'm late. I didn't know you'd be this far along. Jim's correct, we're more than willing to talk. The board believes the money expended there was not good use of taxpayer dollars. The low use of that facility and what we were investing in there just isn't good use of money. And if somehow that can change, we'd be looking at trying to start that again, but from what the board sees, we just don't see those numbers growing over there, and the previous people in charge were not willing to talk. So maybe we can turn a new leaf, and maybe we can build those numbers, but, you know, I'm a businessman, and I would not do that in my business. Just does not make sense. We're willing to work with them if they want to, you know, the first thing they could do is, and I don't think they're doing it, Jim, is giving public access to their computers. It doesn't cost them a dime, they got them over there. But since we've pulled out, they've just shut it down. And to me, they could, you know, extend the right hand here of friendship and at least offer their computers to the public, so the public can use their computers, and they haven't even done that. So...
Excuse me, just, I just don't want to get very, we're just having a budget hearing here, and I'm not sure what the computers at Western Dakota Voltech have to do.
I appreciate that, Brad. I'm just, I'm passionate about this, and to the budget question, the money we are spending there is not good use of county or city dollars. So we decided to pull out.
I understand, and I guess we'll just agree to disagree. Thank you, Rod. The next factor is that in the negotiations with the county, I received a couple of personal comments from two different county commissioners about our conversation that we had at one of our Legal and Finance Committee meetings, and the concern that they brought up was that there was potentially of funding the city through that effort. Their understanding was different than what our understanding is, and so I just wanted to allow you to bring that to the negotiation table. Hopefully, that conversation is taking place. And so the other part of it is the security issue. I applaud you for, the library, to do something more with the security part of that. Do you see any changes in the security issue with that?
The only changes I see, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, we've implemented, haven't we implemented security at General Beetle?
Yes, we have.
So we've taken what we have at Rapid City Public Libraries Downtown... So, we, we've taken what we have at Rapid City Public Libraries Downtown Branch. And when we are staffing, and after school closes, 2:30 or 3 o'clock, and that library's basically more of a public library, we've got security there, just like we have downtown, and on Saturdays and Sundays, correct?
Yeah, yeah, both days.
So, we've extended our security at General Beetle, as well as downtown.
If I can, I'll also go back to your line item 4390. I'm reading that, and the budget that I'm looking at is $19,700 for your mobile unit. Am I reading that correctly? Or Pauline wants to jump in? Nope. But Jim, that's what I'm looking at, is line item 4390.
No, 4390 has...
There's no lines here, so...
Yeah, 125,000.
Okay. All right. That makes more sense, because I had questions about that low amount, so...
Yeah. It includes the, some money for the mobile branch, as well as a replacement of a truck that the library has.
Thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderman Ron Wyfembak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Pedigree, I understand making a business decision. Make, you know, having those questions, having the ability to say it's not working. There's some of the questions that you pose that are tough sometimes, and you take the heat for them. And hopefully, people can separate their personal passion from a business decision. And I understand how those business decisions take place. With that being said, what was the dollar amount that came, gave you guys that conclusion?
Our numbers show we were investing around $250,000 a year there.
So, that's, that's a number you won't have to invest anymore, right?
Correct.
Okay.
But having said that, Ron, when we got involved in that institution, our budget did not increase. We just took that out of our, our monies. We did not get any more money to hire staff. We put some computers over there. We put books over there. We put art over there. That all came out of the library's pocket. We were not given any additional funds to support that facility.
Right. I understand. But you guys have been doing that for, at the tune of about $250, $250,000, which brought you to the conclusion that the bang for the buck just didn't make sense.
Correct.
Correct?
Yep.
Thanks.
All right. I see no other lights in the queue. Mr. McShane?
Yes.
Rod, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. So, as a wrap-up, I guess we can go through, does anybody have anything for Tracy as far as notes that we want to take to the, to remind us of anything we want to revisit when we go to the final budget hearing? Alderwoman Darla Drew.
I'd like to direct city staff, and I'm not sure which department would do this, but I would like to look into the control of the temperature of the Doll, and why we're spending so much money on, on that. And I don't know who looks at it, but I would like to see that their temperature is not 61 degrees when it doesn't have to be.
Thank you. We'll go to Alderwoman Amanda Scott.
Thank you. May I ask Pauline Sumption a question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Pauline, in earlier today, we asked about the revenue, and you, you've got emails to compile the information for the community investments coming in. I guess if you had said last night, I missed it, and maybe I was sleeping after the meal we had last night, but are we going to get the revenue projections for the general fund, as well as the revenue projections for all the enterprise funds?
Correct. That usually comes at the last council meeting. I don't know why it's, it's done that, but we've always done that, at least with the general fund. We haven't really looked at the enterprise funds before, just because it's one of those that their fees cover all their expenditures, so we've always just kind of left it alone. But we have accumulated those from the department, so we can give you all those as well.
I believe that I've always asked for them from the enterprise fund, year after year after year. That's always been the explanation. But I know that they need to build reserves in order to fund their own projects and stuff. I just think the city council, if we're going to approve the budget, I just assume have all the information. So, if we could get the revenue for all the enterprise funds, as well as the general fund, that would be great.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Before, before I go on, Mr. Laurenti, Pauline, could, and this might answer a couple, where do we go from here? We, we have, we take next week off, and then we, do we know the dates for the next hearings, which would be what, Public Works and Fire and...
Civic Center's on there, too. Attorney's Office. And there's another one, and I'm, oh, Community Development, or Community Planning and Development Services. And so, those five departments, we'll go over revenues. Big conversation on the CPI at that time will happen. We'll probably try to have everything accumulated as far as the other information that you guys wanted, so that way we can maybe even just wrap it up at that meeting. The next date that we were looking at was August 10th, but right now, the only person that can be there is Joel for his presentation. And we really don't want to waste everyone's night, plus we would be downstairs in the community room again, because the school board would be meeting. So, we are hoping to have the next meeting on the 11th of August. But we'll, Tracy's going to work on that some more tomorrow, just to make sure.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Chair. And I just wanted a note to be made as we get later, and push comes to shove, as sometimes does in, in the budget hearings, you know, and decisions need to be made about what's going to get funded and what shouldn't be funded, and some of the things that weren't on the radar that get introduced later in the budget hearings. But I just wanted a note made on the Performing Arts Center and Destination Rapid City. The funding that is proposed for 2016 at this point, at least from my standpoint. I don't know if anybody else shares that point, but I just, I'll bring it up if it doesn't get brought up. But I just wanted to mention that.
Thank you. Tracy, you'll have that, then, on your notes? Okay, great. Alderman Ron Wyfembak.
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't want to expand on that a little bit. And I'd like to, I think we're, we're going to see some of the revenue expense sides from the different, like the, what we heard tonight, but we didn't see any of that.
What, what, what happened when, when, when we met to set these dates, we agreed to ask, and, and as, as our finance officer stated, she, she overlooked that. And she, she mentioned that last night. So, she sent emails out today to all these community investments, asking basically for their budgets, or their income and their expense side, so that everybody could take a look. Now, now, what, if something does happen at the, let's say at the next meeting, somebody has a real red flag of one of these community investments, and feels that they should come in and do a complete, you know, presentation, I guess we could all talk about that and ask somebody to come back in. But, but, but in the past, and I have, I don't have a long history doing, in the past, generally, what we've done with these community investments is not have them do a presentation, just ask them to be present for questions, so...
Yeah, I definitely don't need a presentation. I, I'd just like to see the revenue expense sides. Like, I want to be fair to the Journey and pose the same type of questions to almost all these. Between the Doll and the Journey, we're over half a million dollars every year, year after year. And we, and we look at, now, we're looking at the Performing Arts, who is now coming in. Right now, they're just going to ask for a, you know, $26,000 one time. You know where that's going. It's going to be an operating, not going. So, looking at opportunities to synergize. I mean, the Doll's got a building, Journey's got a building. When they, when the Doll and the Performing Arts came for vision funds, you know, unfortunately, I wasn't here at the time, but there was some huge strife that cost two separations. So, the synergy of cost savings were never capitalized on. So, I'm looking, at what point do we say, hey, listen, maybe we need to rethink some of these things? Just like Mr. Pedigree, Pedigree had said tonight about the WDT. He said, you know, it was a business decision. That made more sense to read and direct, you know. I mean, you got to say the Journey Museum is a hard spot for people to find. And it's sometimes, you know, to showcase some of our city history, we think maybe there's an opportunity to look at different locations, how we can re, you know. And so, if we have these revenue expense sides, we can see who is supporting those, those, those things in the city, and see where they're going with them. And then we look at Destination Rapid City. And I still didn't, I still didn't quite understand what, what the $80,000 request was for. I mean, I had a little bit of a conversation with Mr. Beigler in reference to going to the park budget. I'm assuming there's a reason for it going to the park budget. But I think he talked a little bit about the flowers and those types of things down there. But when we talk about garbage and that type of stuff, I think maybe we're going into an area where maybe the city council needs to take a really good look at that stuff.
Sure.
You know, and so if we could get something, if we could reach out to Jeff Beigler and get something, him, why is he putting in this, why does he feel pertinent to put this into his budget and see where we're, you know, what we're heading, what are we getting out of that $80,000?
Sure. And I, and I agree with you, Ron. And then I think we all leave here with some questions. And as a chair, a question that I, I wish now that I'd asked, the Performing Arts that I didn't, is, is that I believe, you know, that there was, there were three players in the Performing Arts. There's the school, the city, and then the Performing Arts Group. And I, I believe there's several, several MOUs. And, and they stated that, that while with the school's budget as it is, they've decided not to do the janitorial. Well, that may be true, but, but do they have an MOU that states otherwise? You know, so, and I, 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 I need to ask that question. So, I think we all have some personal investigation that we want to make, too. But this is, you know, and, but most of this needs to be done in a public format, but...
Right. And I appreciate that, Mr. President. That's why I got to answer my constituents. I mean, when they come to me and ask me questions, I got to be able to answer them. And those are questions they ask me all the time. So, and I feel comfortable being able to analyze that information and give them an answer on...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. President. For clarification, the mayor added the $80,000 to the general fund budget. Jeff Beigler did not add it to his. Looking at the duties that the green team or clean team does, basically, they took over a lot of the duties that the Parks Department guys used to do. Taking care of those, those nodes, the four nodes on each of the corners, emptying the garbage on those corners, that type of thing. So, that's why we in finance felt the best place to put it would be under the Parks Department, because they had those, those responsibilities, or a majority of those responsibilities prior to that. So, Jeff Beigler might not be the person to ask on that one, because Dan or the mayor can, you know...
Otherwise, I'm going to have Walmart.
No, I understand. I just, I just wanted to make you aware that Jeff Beigler really didn't have anything to do with this one, so...
Thank you. And I, and I just want to go back to something that I believe Richie had mentioned about, and I'm, I'm not speaking for the mayor, but, but I have heard the mayor say that next year, when, when he presents the budget, I believe he intends to present some of these things in a different format, in different line items. And, and of course, it's, that's, it'll be Mayor Allender's budget to prepare. So, and I'm not sure how he's going to do it. But I, I do think that after this year, we will see some of these things presented differently. So, with that, I have no other lights in the queue. I would entertain a motion. We have a motion by Nordstrom, second by Laurenti. To adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks. Good night.